Good morning. Meeting is now called to order. Any items from the public? Good morning. Forward state your name for the record, please.
We're here to make some comments on the property. South Berkeley eighty-five sixty-two Winchester Avenue. Also known as Smiley's Auto and Truck Repair. It's about two-thirds of an acre. I own two and a half acres next to it. Both properties are across from Rankin Physical Fitness. And my property is adjacent to the Muslim High School football field, or at least the property at least there. Before we begin, I'm not a proponent of HOAs or government overreach zoning. I'm not a proponent of any of that. I'm pro-freedom. But with freedom comes a lot of responsibility. And in that responsibility, in my opinion, it includes a measure of respect for your neighbors. Been dealing with the Berkeley County, some of the people in the commissions I don't, which I got so many departments, I really don't know, but there were citations issued initially by Brian Ross. They said on April sixteenth twenty twenty-four, they were referred to the prosecuting attorney. But of course, you know, maybe that's backlog. I don't know. I sent Mr. Goganhour pictures I'd taken of this property over the course of probably fourteen months. I also got the state involved because they said, the supervisor, Pat LaHose, had got an email. I got an email from him that said, "It was not a junkyard. It's supposed to be an auto lot." I talked personally with the lady that, in the DMV, and she said, "What's an auto lot?" I said, "Well, what's with the trash jobs? Oh, he's fixing all those up to sell." I said, "Where are the cars actually for sale?" She said, "The two on the right of the house right there." Cool, okay. If you guys been down around eleven South Berkeley, you can't miss this place, all right? Scott Weasandforth was there twice from the state of West Virginia, and their conclusion, and I have this in email too, "It's not a junkyard. It's a messy property." There's messy properties all over the state, okay? What would qualify it as a junkyard? Well, selling parts off of stuff there. Well, I've witnessed that. But if I take videos twenty-four seven, I don't have time to get my stuff done. Truthfully, the two, so two of the biggest problems, as I see it, I don't know what's dripping on the ground over there. And I have one of the last wells in that area. Everybody else is on city water. I'm on city sewer, but I had a functioning well from the house, so I hooked it up. While bathing in that water, I sure ain't gonna drink it, because I don't know what's, what's in the ground, okay? I'm not saying the property's contaminated. It just makes me wonder. There's three vehicles in the middle of the property. The trees have grown up where you can't see the vehicles. They're completely obscured. I had to install an extensive camera system. It wasn't really a problem trespassing. I've caught maybe a couple of kids over there in three or four years. But if you've ever owned a building on a slab, or a pole barn, or a run-in shed, this is an issue. And I was talking to Mr. Goganhour before. The groundhog's over there. That's like breeding central. So I have to be constantly vigilant. I'm next to the school. If I pull the trigger, the black helicopters show up, so you can't do that. So I'm over there leg trapping and doing whatever I can to keep the varmints in the bay. I'm from Fairfax and I left Fairfax because of government overreach and regulations. I don't wear a draw knife. I really don't. I believe in freedom. But it's, it's, it's not a messy property. You got a brand-new park there. I keep my place groomed and clean. Rankin's across the street, Two Biscuits Caddy Corner from me. Got Haringe Hall, and D and D meats, and then Buckwheat's. Everybody just keeps their stuff straight. And I don't care what anybody says. It's a messy property. It's a junkyard. And it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore for South Berkeley. And it's an eyesore for the visiting teams. And it's going to be an eyesore for whoever visits our new park. That's it. I don't know what we can do. I'm just making these comments to see if we can do something.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. On the consent agenda, on the purchase order log, anybody have any questions today for Tracy? Here ain't none. Let me get backed up here. All right. There are no internal budget revisions this week, Mr. Wine?
No, sir.
Change of status. Hiring recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Tara Farley as a DRC Recovery Coach, with an annual salary of forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's effective eleven three twenty-five. Hiring recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Geneva Moats as a drug screening technician with an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. That's effective eleven three twenty-five. Hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Joe Kinzer, Prosecuting Attorney, for Ashton Myers as Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, with an annual salary of eighty thousand, and that's effective eleven three twenty-five. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for St. Newton, Deputy Court Marshal for a grade increase for years of service, with a salary change from forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to forty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That's effective retroactive to nine one twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Erin Rivers, DRC therapist two, and it's effective eleven fourteen twenty-five. The October twenty-third minutes, everybody was there, so we can leave those in the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Then properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Thank you. Nothing this week from the assessor's office. So we're down to board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Okay, well, last week we had a museum board meeting after we left here. Two and a half hours, I guess, maybe something like that. Left my handbook over in the room, but we met with the architects about the design and the direction of the buildings and what to do. And they had some suggestions, preliminary things. We gave our inputs and worked closely with them. It was a great meeting. I think we sort of have a plan moving forward. They had some great ideas. For the museum, even for both buildings, the old courthouse and the annexed building, what you want to call the old bank building. So we're moving forward to see where that goes. I'm gonna work on some, some drawings and things there. Then, yeah, oh, yeah, I do have a note. CBB meeting was yesterday. I'm sorry. I've got a lot going on in my mind. The, the CBB yesterday. Board passed a three thousand dollar support grant for the Veterans Parade, November the eighth. The film shoot is coming up, starting mid-November to December. Just finished before Christmas. Airbnb rentals, we have four hundred and forty-nine, three hundred and four occupancies, thirty-nine percent last month. It's twelve percent higher than September. occupancy rate for VROBs is thirty point six, sixteen percent higher than September twenty-four. Hotel occupancy is sixty-three point three percent, which is seven percent above the numbers from twenty-four. So over the last couple of months, the occupancy rates have been on the rise. And, yeah, pretty short meeting over there. They had the, the group coming into the writers. They have these new travel writers that come and they were going around to some of the breweries and distillers and things to write about Berkeley County places for people to come visit. So it was, it was a short meeting in and out, those couple of things.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
You know, what if, I think you didn't hold on. Family's safe.
Yeah, my family's safe. You know, that's been a lot going on. You know, so I got to speak to them the day before yesterday after the storm. We were good. Some, some damage, but everybody seemed safe. We know we had a generator running, and they have food and whatnot, water, so. But as of yesterday morning, I couldn't reach them. All communications are down. I'm hoping maybe today, tomorrow worst, hopefully. I don't know. I was able to communicate through the whole storm, but after the storm, sometime that night, they, I guess they shut down everything to maybe try to get some things fixed. I don't, I don't know. They've been out of power since ten-thirty on, on Tuesday. And no way to communicate since about nine-thirty Tuesday night. But praying for them, and I think they'll be okay.
You're a storm in the history of Jamaica.
Yeah.
Cat five.
Like fourth or fifth worst in the world ever.
Ever, yeah, but obviously for that.
Well, I only know one, one person in Jamaica, and I haven't met him yet, but I feel that's a Connie, so that's a rumor.
Yeah, he was smiling, you know, it was rough. The one hundred and eighty-five mile winds came through. The eye landed twenty-one miles from my resort, the way a bird flies. That town is leveled, hospital leveled. Water was knee-deep in the hospital. Roofs came off. Pummeled. It's bad. But, you know, I haven't got, oh, I was just on the radio this morning talking to them about, about all of it. And I haven't got a full report on my property and what's going on, but hopefully soon I'll know a little more. I know we lost parts of the roof, had to relocate some guests. That roof blew off in the storms. You could just see outside. So there's some damage, but I'll hopefully be able to assess once I can get back in connection with them.
There's work to do, but along with everybody's okay.
That's right. The roof can be fixed.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Boyd?
I didn't have any meetings, but I did attend the reception for the new president of WBU, President Benson, on Monday down at the venue. We spoke, oh, probably about fifteen, twenty minutes, and it seemed to be pretty vibrant. And I think the, the school is gonna be well sought, well looked after. So he had some great ideas and about retaining the, the high school kids here in West Virginia, once they move on to WBU and hopefully graduate and still become citizens here in West Virginia.
Keep them here.
Keeping them here. And that's, he said, "That's half the battle. We're gonna work on it."
Very good.
It was a good, good venue.
Good. Wes Calle?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday after, afternoon, early evening, we had our ambulance authority meeting for the month, and I, I, things are going really well there. One of the things I wanted to mention this morning was the staffing situation. So last month we were at a hundred percent. It sounds good, but we actually try to be at a hundred and ten percent. And as of this month, we're at a hundred and five percent staffing. At a hundred and ten, what it does is allow people, when they need off and vacations, or sick, or this, or that, we have full coverage. And what it does is actually save us at a hundred and ten percent. It saves us the overtime expense. And I, I think just in the last year alone, they've saved over a hundred thousand dollars just in overtime from previous years. So they're, they're doing a really good job of monitoring that and, and controlling that. And also, it prevents burnout from those that, if they have to work a lot of overtime in that occupation to obviously give them some relief. So Tuesday evening this week, I attended a meeting at the Board of Ed along with Commissioner Goganhour. We serve on the CEFP Advisory Committee, which is the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan. And been meeting for several months now, and the purpose is to give a, a recommendation to the Board of Ed for a future bond call as to what, what schools are needed and what facilities are needed next if, if the community would pass another bond levy in the future. So I've enjoyed working on that, and I don't think it'd be fair for me to say what, what the committee has come up with until the board actually takes action on what they're gonna pursue. But they, they, I, I, I give them a lot of credit for taking input from all over the community about the, the plans in the future. So that's, that was good, good stuff. On Wednesday, I was back at the Board of Ed again yesterday with the School Safety Committee meeting. And the Raptor program that I talked about a couple of months ago, it, it's a, it's a badge that they wear, and it has alerts, signals on it to, depending on what degree of situation, bad situation you're in, you can alert whomever is necessary to answer the call. And they have now over twenty-six hundred employees that are, are wearing this Raptor badge. And they're still working out some tweaks, but I think it's a wonderful addition to the full safety of our children. And, and it, and it, they've had some, not major issues, some minor issues where, you know, it has worked really well, and it gets people that need to be there when there's a situation, negative situation, to handle it. So I, I, I continue to praise the school system here for the work they've done in trying to keep our students safe. And I know Meg, they talked about, I know it came up in the meeting that St. Joseph's School is gonna have a school resource officer here, maybe after the first of the year, provided by the City of Martinsburg Police. And the goal is, is to have either SRO or SSO in every school in Berkeley County, and including the, the private schools as well. So nothing more important than keeping our, our kids safe. And I, I, I congratulate them on the work they're doing. Yep. That's all that happens, sir.
Very good. Thank you. As Steve mentioned, we had the facility meeting, and I give them a lot of credit for doing their due diligence of reaching out to the community, getting community input. I know that I attended one of those public sessions. I wasn't able to attend the other. And then, of course, I think there's some online stuff. But just trying to reach out to get, to get the kind of, what, what folks think. Moving forward, the facility needs are going to be in Berkeley County and as we continue to grow. And also, you know, yesterday was the, the safety meeting that, that we attend. And, you know, there's, there's nothing more important than what we do in ensuring that, that the children and the employees have a, a safe work environment to, to learn and, and to work in. So, you know, we've got people all around the table from all, all parts of our county that participate and try to make, make things better and have that input there. So as, as Steve mentioned, I give them a lot of credit because it's, it's a, it's a tough job. But Sheriff is very engaged, and I wanna thank him for his involvement there as well as, you know, multiple agencies throughout the county, so.
Jen does a great job in nine-one-one and working with them, and our homeland people as well. So it's, it's good stuff, yeah.
And also, I had a landmarks meeting, and probably the biggest concern there was over a cemetery that may have been intruded upon on private property. It was a Spitznagle Cemetery down McCoys Ferry area, area. I don't think that the graves have been messed with, but the fencing and maybe some headstones have been moved. So they're, they're working with the private landowner there to make sure those areas are respected. We have a new application received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief, for the local emergency planning committee. And I have a letter of resignation from Jack Spencer with the Berkeley County Fire Service Board. Kinda hate to see that, that happen. Jack was a very valuable member of the Fire Service Board. Brings a lot of different perspectives to that board, but he's taken an opportunity for another employment. But next up is our honorary commissioner. He's from St. Joe's School. It is Maya Nowin. Do you, will come forward? Raise your right hand, please. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Maya Nowin.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will uphold the Constitution?
That I will uphold the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of West Virginia?
Of the state of West Virginia.
That I will work hard?
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities?
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of honorary commissioner?
Of honorary commissioner.
To which I've been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
To help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who's yours?
Um, my name's Maya Nowin, and I'm an eighth grader at St. Joseph's School. I'm a part of the volleyball team. I'm Vice President of Student Council. I'm also Dance Captain of Show Choir. And I'm also part of the recycling team. Yeah, that's mostly what I do at my school, like the programs that I'm part of.
Yeah. So you have any thoughts about your future plans?
Oh, well, I hope that I can be a part of the medical field and hopefully become a CRNA. That's like what I wanna be when I'm older.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, welcome, and we're glad you're here this morning.
Thank you.
Here is your. All right. And we'll get a picture here in a little bit, okay? All right. There we go. Thank you. A few minutes before a bid opening, Ms. Hammond's not here yet. Do you state budget revision?
Sure.
State budget revision number three. The commission has the opportunity, or I'm asking you to realize.
has the opportunity, or I'm asking you to realize four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. And I'll walk you through where I propose that you allocate the funds. The first is in account four oh four, which is sheriff's tax office, increase it by sixty-four thousand and sixty dollars. If you remember, you approved the process for the sheriff to hire and make some changes down there. And that's the amount that you previously committed to. In account four twelve, which is your agriculture agent additional, ten thousand dollars. That's actually passed through money from the Board of Education for Mikey and the team at, at, at the egg agent to, to do travel and materials and supplies. Four thirty-nine, which is planning and zoning to increase it by twenty-four thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. And immediate, immediately beneath that account four forty, engineering reduce that by twenty-four thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. And that is again to support your decision several weeks ago for changes in management and structure in planning and zoning. Hundred in state grants account four hundred and forty-three, one hundred nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. That is a EPMG grant from the state for half the salaries of Sean Wolford and Randy Lilly. We bring that into four forty-three, we'll turn past that through to the nine-one-one fund and a P O next week. Contingency six ninety-nine, proposing you reduce it by three-hundred-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. And we'll touch on that down here in a second. Sheriff's law enforcement account seven hundred, increase that by twenty-five thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. And that is contract work and billing by the sheriff's department. So that's just money's received, it put in the sheriff's account. Account seven eleven, which is your fire department, want increase by one-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Those are the quarterly payments from the fire board to support your growth efforts that you approved last year with the firefighters that were hired. Central garage increase account seven seventeen by five thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. That's to accommodate a personnel pay adjustment we did last year that I failed to include in this year's budget. Seven thirty-one, which is community corrections, ninety-two thousand dollars and twelve cents. That's money's billed by them. It's passed through to put into Tims. And then lastly, nine sixty, which is your capital outlay equipment for county government, increase it by two-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And there's an item for me in a little bit for the commission to approve. Five cruisers for your new cops police officers that you accepted last week. So that's part of the reason for the reduction in your contingency. So the, the total revision is, is four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
I was doing some hunting while you were, while you were talking. Okay. I need a motion to approve the, the state budget revision number three of the fund zero zero one.
So moved. Second?
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a ten o'clock bid opening.
You do, you have the certification of publication. It was advertised on the website, delivered to vendors of known interest. As you well know, and with your approval last week, you approved replacement long guns for the sheriff's department and you had previously approved new shotgun. So the new long guns will not work in their current mounts. So this is a bid for replacement of that mount in the cruiser and it will be funded by the sheriff. Said if that's the right paper.
I don't really know how to pronounce this correctly, so I'll call it DOT ACH Incorporated out of Las Vegas, Nevada. The amount of seventy-one thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Could have butchered it, I guess, but. All Public Safety out of Alliance, Ohio, three-five thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
I just a tooth? Very good. All right. Next up, Ms. Hammond. Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
It's fine, how are you?
Wonderful. Thank you. And you have a proclamation for us this morning?
I do, I actually have two. November is a very busy month for DAR. And let me just say as a preface that I, I come today again as Regent of the William Hanschall Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. We are the oldest chapter in the state, so we have that distinction here in Berkeley County. We were the first and we are the oldest in the state of West Virginia. We have two proclamations that are before you. One deals with Native Americans. I should say as a background to this, that DAR has a longstanding connection and relationship with the Native American community in the country. We sponsor settlement schools, as they were called, dating back to the late nineteenth century. And some of those schools are still in place. They serve now more as schools to help provide educational information to larger communities. So for example, the Hinman School that's in Kentucky, where the floods occurred two years ago. It has an outreach program to that larger community, helping with self-sufficiency and things like growing your own gardens and things of that nature. So there's a longstanding relationship between DAR and our Native Americans. So the first is the American Indians Committee, which is a committee of DAR relative to Native American, the Native American Indian Heritage Month. And would you like me to read it?
Would you like for it to be read?
It's, it's whatever you prefer.
I'll tell you what, how about, how about you reading that one? And I'll, I'll share the, the responsibility and the burden of, and I'll, I'll do the Veterans Day.
Okay, sounds like a winner. I'm going to read my copy that has a little bit larger print. Oh, here's Pam. Actually, I am going to let Pam read this because Pam has had Pam Brush, who is our vice regent. She has had a longstanding relationship and has been the chair of the Native Americans Committee. That's a little larger print.
Good morning, Pam.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, American Indian Committee Proclamation. National American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of nineteen ninety, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore the Berkeley ask you to proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Berkeley County and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities.
Very good. Thank you. Need a motion to adopt the proclamation. So moved, Mr. President.
Second. Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? On favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And our second proclamation today is recognizing Veterans Day. As I mentioned before about the American Indian Committee, we have standing committees within DAR out that represent a number of different interests within the DAR community. And one of, of the most important, of course, as part of our service work is to the Veterans Committee and the veterans of the country. So this is a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day twenty twenty-five. And would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Right? Whereas Veterans Day is a U.S. legal holiday dedicated to American veterans of all wars. And Veterans Day twenty twenty-five will occur on Tuesday, November eleventh. Whereas in nineteen eighteen, on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, an armistice or temporary secession of hostilities was declared between the Allied Nations and Germany in World War One, then known as the Great War. Whereas the holiday was commemorated in many countries as Armistice Day the following year. And November eleventh became a federal holiday in the United States in nineteen thirty-eight. In the aftermath of World War Two and the Korean War, Armistice Day became known as Veterans Day. Whereas in November nineteen nineteen, U.S. President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November eleventh as the first commemoration of Armistice Day. The day's observation included parades and public gatherings as well as a brief pause in business and social activities at eleven A.M. Whereas red poppies, a symbol of World War One, from their appearance in the beloved poem "In Flanders Field" by John McCray, are sold in Canada and the United Kingdom on Remembrance Day to raise money for veterans or worn in the lapel as a tribute, as well as in the United States. Whereas on June fourth nineteen twenty-six, Congress passed a resolution that the quote recurring anniversary of November eleventh nineteen eighteen should be commemorated with Thanksgiving and prayer and exercises designed to perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding between nations, end quote. And that the president should issue an annual proclamation calling for the observance of then Armistice Day. Whereas in nineteen fifty-four, after lobbying efforts by veteran service organizations, the eighty-third United States Congress amended the nineteen thirty-eight act that had made Armistice Day a holiday, striking the word armistice in favor of veterans. President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the legislation on June first nineteen fifty-four. From then on, November eleventh became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes November eleventh twenty twenty-five as Veterans Day and encourages citizens to recognize the sacrifices of its veterans in all wars in American history on that day of remembrance.
Very good. Thank you. Need a motion to adopt the proclamation. So moved. Second? Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? I would just like to say on behalf of this commission, it is our honor and privilege to adopt this proclamation. All in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I invite you all also to the annual observance that is held at War Memorial Park. We do wreath laying on that day. And we both honor and commemorate the veterans, not only of Berkeley County, but of the country.
Yeah, thank you. And the, the parade is on the eighth, I believe, November the eighth here in town, the Exeter State Parade. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Son, you ready? You're ready, we're ready. Just running, we're running a few minutes ahead of schedule. Yeah. Yeah, it's okay.
Good morning.
Yes, so.
I'm here to represent Berkeley County Emergency Emergency Assistance Authority. And this is a reference to the yearly vacation exonerations. You should have a list of the requests for approval and the requests for denial. So we are just looking, ooh, excuse me. I really did take um, your approval to move forward to exonerate those properties.
Okay, so.
Two different motions.
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the first one is for the five exonerations. Those are the ones that did not qualify.
Correct.
Correct.
And you can see the reasons some of the properties have been sold, the owners that applied were not the owners to be eligible to apply.
Right. So I, I'll make the first motion to deny the five. Just, okay. Okay, motion to approve the five exonerations that are presented here this morning.
Yes, sir. Have a motion, need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I oppose.
You oppose?
I do oppose.
I'm confused. We have to make a positive motion and then we deny the positive motion. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's just like on the, the other tax exonerations.
Exactly.
That we, we did in the past.
You have a motion and a second.
All those in favor? Mr. President?
Yeah, all those in favor say aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. I was a little clunky.
Then I have a
Government at work.
Second motion, so approve the one hundred and eight exonerations presented this morning.
That do meet your qualifications, correct? Okay. I do have a, a motion, I need a second.
Second?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you very much. I will get the originals to the office for signature in the next day or two. And hopefully by the end of the day today, you'll have those. And then we'll move forward notifying everyone of their qualification or disqualification.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Serving on the ambulance authority, representing our commission, office staff over there does a terrific job for this community and our, our county. So thank you for all your work.
We do have an excellent group, works very hard together and a great team. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a short break here and we'll be
And next up, Tim Zion, Director of Community Corrections. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Anybody has backup back here, Mr.? Be scared of us.
I say is that the? How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
So you all know that we have a juvenile program that operates at the Day Report Center.
Yeah, it's called the County Commission.
The juvenile program has grown quite a bit since it started. For a while, we were receiving more referrals on a monthly basis for the juvenile program than we were the adults. But it's an important program. These sorts of services aren't readily available to youth in our county. So to have therapists kind of on standby to meet with kids that need therapy, to meet with a peer recovery coach is a really important service. But the program is really operating at capacity, so.
Tim, are your referrals coming from the schools or from Martinsburg Initiative? Or who's your main referral for those kids?
The primary referral source is, I believe, school counselors. Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong.
Counselors at the schools?
Yeah, we're networked with the counselors at the high schools and middle schools. We also get quite a few referrals from probation office. There's roughly 150 kids on juvenile probation. There's roughly one hundred and fifty kids on juvenile probation.
And your age range on these kids usually?
Twelve to seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen?
Twelve to seventeen. So, there's a federal funding opportunity that's going to be pretty darn competitive, but we're going to submit an application.
We've been pretty good at that lately. Cops grant and safer grants and...
You guys have some good grant writers on staff.
Yeah.
And...
She's on a roll right now, so it's a good time to get her active.
Yeah. I wanted to introduce you to, Aaron Mills is our clinical supervisor at the Day Report Center. She is the one who makes it possible for us to be able to be a licensed behavioral health center and to bill Medicaid for services that we provide. She's been on staff with us for how long, Aaron? Yeah, so, and prior to that, when we had a partnership with Mountain Air Behavioral Health years ago, that started at the beginning. Aaron was a therapist for Mountain Air Behavioral Health, and she started our first intensive outpatient program at the Day Report Center when we first started back in 2016. But she was working under Mountain Air Behavioral Health. Dr. Hartens owned that business. So, I've known Aaron since the very beginning. She became a Berkeley County employee in 2020, but she's a licensed professional counselor. She's fully licensed. Her license allows her to bill insurance, to supervise other therapists, so.
Is that working as well as you all hoped it would?
So, you'd be surprised. We have about, just shy of four hundred people in our program. And there's, I think, less than a third of them who are eligible for Medicaid. Because as soon as a person gets a job, they're not eligible for Medicaid. And that's just the way that it is. So, we do bill Medicaid for those that we're able to bill for. We bring in approximately forty thousand a month for Medicaid billing. That number would be much larger if there were more people who were eligible for it, but there's not. So, there's a lot of people who are not eligible for Medicaid, but can't afford private insurance, so they're uninsured. Just the nature of the beast. But I wanted to introduce Aaron to you. She can tell you a little bit more about the juvenile program. But please note, she is a wonderful part of our program, a really important part of our program, and she's a fantastic employee. She carries a lot of weight over there. She's going to tell you a little bit about the juvenile program, and then I also wanted to introduce you to Amanda. Amanda's our grant writer. And I've been nothing but impressed with Amanda since she started. She put together this grant application, and she can tell you just a little bit more about it.
Very good. Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having us. So, as Tim said, I'm the clinical supervisor at the D Report Center, and one of the programs that I supervise is Catalyst. And I believe Catalyst is probably serving our most vulnerable population, our youth. And to explain a little bit more about the participants that we have involved in this program, these are juveniles between the ages of twelve and seventeen who are either already actively engaging in illicit substance use themselves, or they have been negatively impacted by their caregivers or their parents, their substance use. So, we're talking about a lot of trauma, a lot of mental health symptoms, and just really adjusting to life during a really vulnerable time, right? The adolescent period of time. So, what we do over at Catalyst is we provide a continuum of treatment. We have therapists, we have a case manager, and we have a peer recovery coach. And what we aim to do is to meet these juveniles where they are, providing them with appropriate treatment so that they can sustain recovery and recover from the early childhood experiences that they've had as a result of substance use. So, like Tim mentioned, we get most of our referrals through Berkeley County Schools. We also get quite a few referrals through the court system, the juvenile probation office. But we also get referrals from THHR. These are children who are involved in active, open CPS cases. They've been removed from their home, they're in kinship care, so they've got a lot of needs. And at Day Report, we're focused on the recovery. We're trying to keep them away from substances or prevent them from starting for those who have come from households where substance use was something that was definitely present. We try to meet their mental health needs. There are symptoms of trauma, anxiety, and depression. But one of the things that we've noticed since Catalyst started in October of 2021 is the lack of appropriate and responsible adults in their lives. So, one of the things that we were hoping to add to our continuum of treatment was a trauma-informed mentor. Somebody that can really help these kids come alongside of them with the things that they need to do for their lifestyle beyond just not using substances. They have significant struggles staying in school, attending school regularly, transitioning to new living environments, especially those kids that have been removed or in foster care. They're with relatives or friends that they don't know very well. Kids that are on juvenile probation, they have a really hard time sometimes adjusting to all these terms and stipulations. So, we're hoping to add a mentor just to be able to continue their treatment beyond what we can provide just at the Day Report Center. So, like Tim mentioned, Amanda's going to talk to you more about the grant, but I think this is something that would significantly change the lives of these juveniles that we work with. And not to mention, just since the program started in October 2021, we have served just over three hundred youth in our community, and the numbers are just continuing to increase. So, the more help we have, the better these kids are going to be able to sustain their recovery and move on to a better and brighter future, which is what we want to see, a community change, starting with our kids.
One question, should they come to the DRC and not to the one over on...
Yes, they come over to the Day Report Center. We do provide some treatment in Berkeley County Schools. All the middle schools and high schools in the county have been fantastic in accommodating us. So, the kids that can't otherwise get into the center, we go to the school, but most of them come to the Day Report. We provide them with transportation, even transportation for their families if they'll engage in treatment as well.
Okay. Yeah, Steve and I just heard this week from the school system of the challenges that they have. Most of it related to either broken home, violence in the home, drug use in the home that's affecting these children daily. So, those challenges, you know, we hear at almost every turn of that. Has anybody tried to initiate, and I don't know if it's in your all's abilities, but a mentorship with peers, with their peer mentorship, like a, I'm going to say like a teenage person that has, they have the support system and they're doing really, really well. They're respected in the school. To get that young person to come alongside and say, hey, man, you know, what are you doing? You know, you're better than that, you know? You can do better, and let me help you somehow.
Yeah, that's something that we haven't been able to do, but certainly that would be something that would be very impactful. Just knowing developmentally, that's where they are. They listen to their peers a whole lot more than they listen to adults.
Some people that have been through it and were successful in getting beyond it.
Sure. And that's where our peer recovery coach comes in, and that's, you know, kind of the limitations that we have. Our peer recovery coach is fantastic. His name is Joseph Easy. It's been about his own story of struggling with substances at a very young age, and he really comes alongside of them as far as, you know, not using substances and living a lifestyle in recovery. So, that's something that's really helpful, and then we hope with a mentor, it'd be even beyond, more lifestyle changes that support overall growth and recovery.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Amanda Gavin, and I'm one of the county's grants administrators. I work with Elizabeth frequently, but my focus is more on the Day Report Center's grants. So, as Aaron mentioned, the Catalyst program is looking to expand its youth services, and we found a funding opportunity that would allow for that. This is through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, or OJJDP. So, we are here requesting permission to apply for this. This would be a three-year, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar federal grant with no local match required. Most of this budget would go towards staffing, so this would fund a new full-time mentoring coordinator position at the Day Report Center, and it would designate one of our current peer recovery coaches to serve as an adult mentor for half of their time. Now, we would also form a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of the Eastern Panhandle, and this would allow them to hire a full-time adult mentor at the Boys and Girls Club as well. So, we could have some mentoring at the Day Report Center and some mentoring at the Boys and Girls Club and kind of get more out there into the community. The remaining funds that don't go towards staffing would cover mentor training, program supplies, and evaluation costs. So, this program would serve youth in Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan Counties who've been affected by substance abuse or who have a family member affected by substance abuse. Again, would help them not just in recovery, but in all aspects of their lives, to help them build confidence, improve academically, and to strengthen their social connections. The project would run from October of this year through September of 2028. And that's a brief summary. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about this proposal.
I'm sure you may not know, but it's like, because of our growing population, especially in our schools, it's growing, but so is Jefferson, Morgan, I'm not sure how much is growing, but perhaps a little bit. How will that time be split? How will it be managed? You know, I know that like right now, Berkeley County Schools has approximately twenty thousand students. And based on their population in Jefferson, they're probably eighty-five hundred, maybe ten thousand at the most. And Jefferson, you know, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, Morgan, I'm not sure what to... So, how would that work as far as like a regional panhandle type grant?
Right now, too, we would need a little bit of time to get this off the ground. This is a pilot program, so we were hoping to start with forty students per year at first and then grow it from there. If there's any referrals coming then that we can't handle, the Boys and Girls Club should be able to stem some overflow from that as well. And then, if it grows big enough, maybe we could add more mentors in the future or even do a more volunteer model, although we would not start with that. Right now, it would be starting with two mentors, one full-time at the Boys and Girls Club, one part-time at the DRC, and start from there. In Berkeley County, yes.
It'd all be Berkeley County at this point. Well, we like to grant that no federal match required. We like those a lot.
Well, I think the part that I see is that's, this is the generation that you need to get. Those are the ones you need to get to. Just try and, I don't know if you'll ever stop it, you know, but at least slow it down and keep a lot more children healthier than what they may be going down this road because of what they see at home or with their friends. That maybe those children, you can get them back on track where they'll be healthy.
Right, and I think studies have shown trying to reach those children between the ages of twelve and seventeen, and that's what we would be focusing on here is that age range.
Yeah.
We really appreciate your efforts, that's for sure, and obviously, it's such a wonderful thing. There's no reason why we wouldn't approve it, believe me. We want you to do what you can. So, I'm ready to make that motion if you would like one to accept, to give them the authorization to pursue this grant application and move forward, and hopefully you'll be successful. And that's a three-year grant with a total request of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars with no grant match required. Second? Very good. It's been motion and second need further discussion. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Have a great day. Good to meet you all. Next is Gary Wine.
Following Tim and his team's like following Maria Lawrence.
Let's see, we're at budget timeline. We get called back up, pardon me. So, here we go. Seems like we just ended it, but we're right back into the tip of budget season again. You have in front of you a document that you've seen years prior that kind of outlines and sets expectations, and more importantly, gets you to put on your calendars in February and in the latter part of January. Dates carved in stone for Board of Uniticization and budget meetings and so on and so forth. So, if the commission so chooses, and most of this is driven by state code, we'll do our best to get the budget packets out by November seventh. You ask for the outside agency, pardon me, and the internal, but that's exterior. The external internal budget packets out by November fourteenth. They'll be due back by outside agencies by January ninth. Internal departments due back by January twenty-third. We'll start the process of really analyzing and meeting and discussing and setting some level of expectations by the end of January. You see, then Board of Uniticization starts. We'll work budget meetings into and around your mortem meetings of that. We'll start budget hearings the week, all through February. And then, the assessor will present you with the certificate of values and rollback information later than March the third. That's state code. You'll meet with the elected officials on March the fifth and then adopt the budget on the twelfth, and off we go. Unless anybody has any problems or concerns, this is the same document and kind of the same process as you've done, I'd say, the last ten years. The most important thing is, is we get it to the state no later than the end of March. That's when it's due, the twenty-eighth. And then, of course, the very last thing that you lay, you meet the third Tuesday in April to set the levy, so. Just gets the process started unless anybody has any objections.
I certainly have no objections. I know it's a very, very busy time between trying to get to the legislature during that time as well, Board of Equalization, and then our regular commission meeting and our board meetings. As long as you can fit it all in there, sir, we'll be there.
So, we'll get that out. It says a motion. We really don't need it to prove. They just need consensus that that fits everyone's schedule.
You good, Mr. Boyd?
I'm good.
All right. Everybody else all right?
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, sir.
The next thing you have is typically, this time of year, we have a discussion on what the commission wants to do with your legislative summit. I'll just kind of make that statement and open up to you as a group of, do you want us to work on pulling one together? I know last year you discussed maybe not doing one this year. It's what's the pleasure of the commission and what do you want staff to do?
Honestly, I think it's important that we talk to the ones that's worth your venture of time. I mean, that's the truth. That's how I feel about it. So, bringing them all in at one time, I'm not sure it was as productive. I think the ones that we can meet with one-on-one to discuss our issues or two-on-one, however you want to do it, doesn't matter to me. But it's where I'm at.
We'll forego it this year and see what turns out.
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, I would prefer to speak with our colleagues in the city to see if there's any issues that we could work with together with the City of Martinsburg and even the two counties, Jefferson and Morgan, to see if there's areas other than what have already been identified to work on together. I just think that the more that we can work together with them, the stronger we will be.
Dave HD, is that consensus? Does it work for everyone?
Scott? Yeah, I guess. I have mixed feelings about it. I mean, I never heard it to talk to people whether you know what their answer is before you even start the conversation, but... Guess we just keep pounding the drum. It's like the CCA situation in legislation, you know? We keep pounding the drum. We try to get a little step closer every year. But we need to, if we can't bring our message in, nobody can, so it's important to do that.
Very good. Thank you. The next item I have is you have a letter from the Airport Foundation requesting the commission's commitment for your annual Fourth of July celebration. As you see in the letter, they're requesting a hundred thousand. That's part of the donation or the in-kind money that comes from CMC into your quality of life. That will be received in February. That's when it's due. So, the airport is just looking for confirmation that they can begin their commitments and the contractual obligations and know that that money's coming when it gets here.
Yeah, it would come out the, from CMC as well.
Have we had any discussion with the city about possibly teaming up on this event instead of having two different events? Especially if this year, they're requesting that it be on the Fourth of July? I mean, I think we should at least reach out and see instead of double spending money and splitting the group, you know? Maybe they're not interested, but I sure will.
Being that this is a year that it falls.
It's the fourth is a Saturday this year, so, which is, I mean, the city traditionally, and I was involved in it for many, many years, it's always on the Fourth of July regardless of what day it is. And so...
Being that the fourth falls on that day, I think we ought to at least ask.
Yeah, on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary birthday, you know, we did work together... Yeah, on the two-hundred-and-fiftieth uh, anniversary birthday, you know, we did, we did work together. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think the city contributed some extra bucks so they could get higher, so their residents could see them. Uh, but ever since then, they've kind of went their own way. But I I certainly think being that it is on the fifth, or I'm sorry, on the fourth, that it would be uh, an opportunity to maybe work together.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, even having shuttle buses to take people out there, if the complaint is the pity, people in the city won't see it because they can't get there. We work with the Transit Authority and have shuttle buses to drop people off out. It would help the attendance, be a great show, you know, I mean, last year we hit the rain, but still, I think, I think a combined effort and and shuttle buses and some things could make for a great event.
Questions I already posed.
Hurt to ask, that's for sure.
I just asked.
Yeah.
I'll go see if we get straight. That was quick. That was quick.
I would like a motion on that, please.
Oh, yeah.
A a motion to uh, to approve the uh, independent celebration uh, to the MRB Foundation.
For a hundred thousand dollars.
For a one hundred thousand.
So.
Been moved in, second. On paper, say aye. Any further questions? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
The the next one you have is the commission will recall you opened bids last week for comprehensive HVAC and utility management services agreement. Uh, and three bids were received. Um, the first bid was received from your current vendor, Bowlin Train, uh, at in the amount of two hundred eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, Hobson Associate at one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and Casto Technical Services at eighty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, we sat down and reviewed them. Uh, all were relatively comprehensive. One caveat with Casto Technical Services is they don't have the ability to provide a portion of what was in the scope. That's why you see a, an even greater um, reduction in cost than what the other one was, but um, after, after discussion, Jack and I met for quite some time. Um, I think it's to the commission's best interest that we recommend the and and we always try, and sometimes it's difficult, particularly because we have such a longstanding relationship with Bowlin Train. Uh, but you know, the we're spending tax dollars here and and we have to be as conscious as we can and there 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 just isn't any way that I can sit here and recommend anything other than the lowest, most responsible bidder, and that is Hobson Associates in the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
We've never used them in the past before.
We have not. We have not. Um, I I can tell you their proposal, uh, which is included in your read ahead. Does their approach includes some of their in-house team as support personnel, but also a third party to, they would have a third party that will perform some of the work, and that third party has done lots of work here. So i- it's not as if we don't have a a relationship with them at all, so again, are we ultra confident in Bowlin Train and what they can do, and we know what's going to happen when we make the call, one thousand percent absolutely. Uh, but I think uh, for that kind of difference and at this point in time, and again, you know, it's a, it's a five-year agreement with options to renew, years two through five. I don't see any other way, and and I'm comfortable that it's a, it's a good recommendation and that's what I put in writing. That's what I signed.
And they're familiar with our equipment?
Very much so.
Right?
Very much so.
All right. Anybody have any further questions for Gary? All right. In motion to approve the uh, comprehensive HVAC and utility management service agreement with Hobbs Incorporated.
So who moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Need further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next up is law enforcement vehicle purchase.
Yes, sir. So as you well know, and and I alluded to it in the state budget division in robbing some money from contingency and putting in your capital outlay equipment was that you most recently approved COGS grant and five new police officers. Well, they'll serve no purpose to you if they all don't have vehicles to drive, so you you most recently, back in September, awarded five cruisers to Parsons Ford. They were the lowest bidder. I I have called and confirmed that they can honor that price for the additional five. So what I'm asking today is the commission's approval to change the order with Parsons Ford from five cruisers to ten uh, at the same amount, and I'm I really had, I'm not caught up as the president says on occasion, uh, in the amount of
Forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars.
Thank you very much.
Each.
Total for five.
Total for five?
Total for five. It's not outfitted. That's just the purchase price of the vehicle, and it should also be noted, and I'm sure you all were, but I'll say it again, even if we order them today, takes six to eight weeks to get them. Then we have to order the outfitting equipment. That takes another six weeks, which that's out the bid now. Uh, and then we have to outfit, so we're six to eight months before you see those ten cars on the street.
And my question would be, at that point, um, if we have start collecting impact fees, that potentially some of that could be used for you.
Per Mr. Weinberger, the answer to that is yes.
Yep. We're adding capacity.
Correct.
All right. Need a motion to approve uh, Parsons Ford uh, to extend the uh, previous bid, which was forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars per unit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve. I misheard him. It's that times five. It's two hundred and the total amount is two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
I say it's forty-six per 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 vehicle.
Stupid ears.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and further discussion. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
And the last thing I have for you is you recall last week you opened bids for computer equipment at nine-one-one as part of the Motorola upgrade that you're going through. Uh, seven bids were received. The lowest responsible bidder was Berry Solutions Group in the amount of thirty-six thousand seventy-one dollars and four cents.
Okay, well, I don't have very many questions on this. Be honest about it. Um, they they were not the lowest bid.
My lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, so there's discrepancies in their bids or stuff that they can't do.
That's correct.
Right. Okay, you've heard a request from uh, Mr. Wine to uh, approve Berry Solutions by an amount of thirty-six thousand seventy-one dollars and four cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded and further discussion. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Did?
That's it for me, sir.
Okay. And we do have need for executive session?
For personnel, if any actions taken.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Need a motion to go to executive session. Well, hold on a minute. Let me check. Any items from the public? The record show there is none.
Can we discuss a legal matter during that executive session?
And and pendingly, I I do you? Yeah, so for personnel and legal matters.
Yes.
We'll do legal matter first.
All right. Need a motion to go to executive session.
For personnel, legal matters.
For personnel, legal matters. I made it.
Second.
All paper.
We're back in session. There will be no action taken. A motion to recess.